To prepare. And then you have one exit south, but your exits that's got development are north of you. You've got the main Perry exit, which has the Walmart, the Kroger, it has an outdoor store, Chick-fil-A, a Peach, similar to Durbin's, a place like that, and some hotels. And then you have Warner Robbins, which is the next exit up. And that's where the Air Force Base is. You've got a little bit nicer hotels, which is why we want to use the workforce development component, because when you're using a park like this, it's not a steady flow, even though it is a steady, it's not what the hotels consider steady. So we want to be able to use a steady flow so we can bring in some higher level hotels. But Warner Robbins has the hotels and restaurants there as well. There's a downtown Perry, but it's just two main exits plus Warner Robbins, so three.
Thank you.
And you've got to remember Perry's on the south end of the state. So that's not where the population in Georgia is versus us, where we're within an hour's drive of a fifth of our population. So that's a big difference, and they made that note as well.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
So, we're all extremely fortunate for this opportunity, and you know, we have complaints a lot, especially from our younger people in our county, about our quality of life here. You know, we don't have things to do and places to go and entertainment and food and all those things that young people want. And unfortunately, we wind up losing a lot of our young people because of this. Some of them wind up coming back later in life, but a lot of our kids leave here as soon as they're old enough to leave to go on to perceive green or pastures. But you know, this gives us an opportunity, guys, if we capitalize on this, to make this a place where our kids will live, stay, and raise our grandkids. So it is an awesome opportunity, and I'm personally very thankful that we've been able to pull this off so far. So thank you, Whitney, and thank you, guys. So changing our agenda around a little bit, I think what Jimmy has on his agenda fits into this conversation. So we're going to move Jimmy up, and he'll be next up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to touch briefly on a resolution I'm going to ask you guys to approve tonight. I emailed you the resolution that had been several months ago when Chairman Caton was in chair, and he asked me to go into the community and find several people that like-minded that would help us to find out revenue for our community. And it was like a roundtable. It was not a committee, just for the record. It was a roundtable of those business-minded and those who are involved in certain areas in our community. I want to give you some numbers. First of all, I want to tell you that I have myself personally listened to, and I've talked with our chairman about this, and I prayed about this, that we have not had those things that we need to support our county, our county roads, our county infrastructure, economic development. We have sit here and watched everybody around us get those things, and I know that we've been a bedroom community, and I understand that. This era is a new day for Chilton County. This is an opportunity for Chilton County to grow. Any of you have vehicles here know that, and I'm one of you, I'm your commissioner, just spent $1,600 on building the front end of my 2012 Dodge and got to do another one. So I understand your pain. I got a text just before we come in here of a man, this is a good friend of mine, in a nice way blessing me out because of the potholes, he's run his third set of rims. And I told him, "Thank you," and I love him. But you know, and we all, as commissioners, become a punching bag sometimes if we're not careful for the citizens of Chilton County, because we're not doing our jobs. Well, let me tell you this. We enjoy what we do. We enjoy what we do, and that's the position we ask you to vote for us to be in. I'm excited to tell you that I have, we have looked everywhere you can look on revenue and discovering revenue. I'm going to ask the commission to vote for a one-cent sales tax for the Chilton County, and also, we have to change the structure of our tax. Anybody knows that our taxes, the way it's set up now, we get six cent in a county. I'm only talking about the county, I'm not talking about the municipalities. Four cent goes to the state of Alabama, one cent goes to the hospital, thank God for the hospital, and one cent goes to education, and we need to educate our children. So there's nothing there in sales to support the roads and the infrastructure and economic development, and must-let's public safety for that matter. I'm asking the commission to consider approving a resolution for one-cent sales tax and to two cent in the unincorporated areas, that will be not the city areas. We have been, I have been informed that General Dollar is making plans to build more General Dollars in Chilton County. That's their investment. And as I've talked to many road builders, and I've talked to our engineer and things that we need to support this county, we've got some good basis, we need to put money to asphalt. I've also talked to the commission and them about putting this money toward the asphalt of the roads and the infrastructure and public safety. I just wanted, somebody asked me what infrastructure was, so I want to kind of break it down for best, and I'm glad Whitney's here in case I missed something. Infrastructure is what we consider broadband, water, sewer, and most of all, what the best talked about are roads and bridges. And if I left anything else, Whitney, you could help me there, wherever you're at in the crowd. Also, the economic development, we have the opportunity to invest. This is not, this is going to come from a price, we haven't even been told a price of what our part of, we're going to have to pay something. Now, it was once said that we're going to build Alpha Building, well, that's wrong. I hope you don't mind me clarifying this tonight. We're not building Alpha Building. You, if you live in the county of Chilton County, you own that property out there. If you live in a city, you own that property. That is an investment that we've decided, that this previous commission decided to do. And we're going to use our taxes. When you go to the beach, or you go to the Six Flags, or you go to the mountains, you pay for their roads. You pay for their infrastructure. You pay for their motels, okay? We're going to receive that same thing once this project's complete. This is what I like to call, for better form of words, pass-through money. It's time we get pass-through money. We're centrally located, that super slab, I call the interstate out there, is full of cars, of travelers and vacationers, they know, you can go anywhere you want to, they know where the Peach is, they know where Chilton County is, they know where the, all you've got to do is mention right between, this is a stopping point when you're headed to the beach. This is the best place besides stopping in Montgomery, or besides stopping down there. So we need to take advantage of that. We need to take advantage of the opportunities we have. We've not had opportunities like this come to Chilton County. The prior commissions have tried several times to pass revenue and get revenue for this. I'm proud to say I support this 100%. I support it 100%, and I'm asking the commission for a resolution to support and to move this bill and present it to legislation. And also, I want to share these numbers with you, this project is expected to bring in over $83 million in visitor, that's visitor money, and create over 2,000 jobs as a whole, as a whole. Yes, we'll have to play our part. Nobody likes taxes. Nobody, every time you say, "We don't want taxes, we don't want taxes." Do we want roads? Do we want our families and our kids to stay here? Do we want, do we want infrastructure in our town? Well, it's going to cost us something. It's going to cost us something. I was approached and said, "Well, we want to be held you accountable for that." Well, let me tell you this, we're accountable for every dime that we have here. We study these budgets, we look at everything, and we do call people out on them. I don't have a problem doing that, none of these commissioners do. Do we make bad mistakes sometimes? Yes. If anybody here is perfect, please stand up, and I'll put you on the next election, and for your name on the ballot for the next election for commissioner, because we need perfect people. But we're not going to be perfect, and we're going to make mistakes. And I'm going to quit right there before I'm getting some looks from people that maybe I need to be quiet before I get on my soapbox. But I'm just, I'm going to read this resolution, not entirely, but I'm going to read-
No, no, just the resolution, not the bill, just read the resolution.
Well, I got to flip to it right here, so, excuse me. I don't mean to get on our soapbox, but I enjoy, I enjoy serving with this team right here. I enjoy what she's done, I enjoy serving with these guys that took out their time. They don't get paid to do what they do, not in their dime. Well, Whitney does, yeah, move right along. But, the resolution of Chilton County, the resolution I'm asking for, a resolution of a Chilton County Commission supporting a bill relating to the tax, sales tax increase of air-marked for infrastructure, public safety, and economic development. Whereas the Chilton County Commission has proposed a bill relating to the sales tax increasing earmarked infrastructure for public safety, environment, development, and whereas the local legislative delegation has requested a resolution from the Chilton County Commission supporting the bill. Now for, now therefore, be it resolved by the Chilton County Commission as follows. The Chilton County Commission is seeking to have a legislator levy of a sales tax for the purpose of infrastructure, public safety, and economic development in Chilton County. The collection of this tax is going to be the beginning of the third quarter of 2019. And witness of, the Chilton County Commission has caused this resolution to be executed in its name and on the behalf of the vice chairman on this 26th day of February 2019. Gentlemen, that's my resolution.
Put that in motion.
Can I have that in a, I would like to have that, I'll make a motion.
Just put the resolution in motion.
Yeah.
I second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. The floor is open for further discussion. Now, I would like to make a statement at this point for myself. You're going to see me abstain tonight, and I'm going to abstain because I have a potential conflict. There are two exemptions in this sales tax. There's an exemption for what's considered big-ticket items, which is, most counties do it for their automobile dealers. Our automobile dealers are already paying more tax than the surrounding counties, so we didn't want to put them at a disadvantage. There's also an exclusion in here for agriculture. And because my family owns a farm, and I manage that family business, I personally cannot vote on this. But do not take what I'm doing tonight as that I'm opposed to this or in favor of it. I just had to totally remove myself from the discussion.
And Mr. Chairman, may I add to that about the automobile? I met with our automobile owners here, our majority of our automobile owners, and they brought light, and it's good to do research, that they collect 74% of the tax outside the county. 74% of their sales are outside, and they collect them for us. They don't have to, there's no law that says they have to. But, they do. And that was, I met with them and discussed this with them, and I asked people to meet with them, and also met with agriculture too, and this is, agriculture is the leading revenue for the state of Alabama, and this is going to be an agriculture project, so I just want to clarify that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. The floor is still open for discussion. No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Let the record show that Commissioner Headley opposes and Commissioner Parnell abstains. Motion carries. All right, Tony, do you have any, anything tonight?
No, sir, I have no business for the commission.
Thank you. Tony, if you'd like to leave, you're welcome to. Does anybody have anything they need from Tony tonight?
Yeah, fix some Paul.
Okay.
Are we ready for tomorrow?
Yeah. Yeah. Tony, before you go, Matt had a question.
Okay.
Are we prepared for the governor tomorrow?
We've got one of our worst roads.
Definitely prepared then, yes.
So for those of you that don't know, the governor's planning to come to Chilton County tomorrow to do a press conference, and she told them to find the worst road and the worst bridge they could find, and they come into Chilton County.
Tony obliged.
I'm not sure that's a reward, though, that award that we wanted.
I'm sure that was not very hard to do.
It was not.
Tony, how far away do we need to park to be safe? A long way.
We're going to have buses ready for everybody.
Okay.
All right, Derek, you're up.
Derek Wright, our EMA director. All right, so I just want to give you guys a couple of updates. We discussed before the weather notification systems. I've talked with a couple of agencies. Right now, we're looking at about the same price, between $8,500 for an amazing system that the state is eventually going to go to statewide, which will get a discount then, is looking about $15,000. That system, and the reason I say it's amazing, because say Alpha's having a large event, we can put a sign up that says, hey, text Chilton EMA or whatever, and when they do, they're going to get notifications that says, hey, you know, we have an active shooter, or we have a tornado coming, things like that, that we can send out alerts, same way with Infligo, large events that helps us out with weather. So like I said, it's looking between $8,500 and $15,000. The $15,000 does make it a lot easier for people to sign up, they can just text a number, you know, or text Chilton EMA, or however we want to do it, to a number, and it signs them up. But that is a substantially large amount of money that I just wanted to throw those numbers out, not asking for a vote on anything tonight at all regarding that. Storm shelters have been signed off by the state fire marshal. We do have some things we need to fix. I think we have some of the right people here to fix the Conch Chapel, and we need a fire extinguisher and a first aid kit that should have came with our storm shelter, just haven't made it yet, and some signage that we're waiting on to figure out, still on the grants, that who's responsible for that area. I haven't figured that out yet. There's been a lot of turnover between the state EMA on changes over between their positions. Therefore, so it's taken a little bit longer to get some of that stuff and try to figure out who to track down and get that paperwork. So, chaining hats to safety, we had a safety meeting the other day, we decided to go with our $4,000, we have our budget, to push that toward Higgins Ferry to update their, I guess it's their dock over there that's having some issues there. That was one of our things that were hit for safety on our last audit, so we're looking at possibly pushing that money to help them fix that. I would suggest that you guys probably get with Mr. Arrington if possible to see if he's going to need more economic development. Bass tournaments are a huge economic impact to Chilton County, we make a lot of money off fuel, and you know, a lot of things, bass tournaments are amazing for Chilton County, especially if we do add a sales tax, so I would reach out to him for that. Anything for me?
Thank you, Derek.
Sorry, trying to make it quick, I know, running behind.
Hey, Derek, I do have one question. You said that the text and, I'm sure that most of our county, even with our elderly, are kind of up to speed with texting, I mean, as far as getting texts and stuff, wouldn't you say that?
A lot more up to date with texting than there were apps.
Right.
There's a lot of apps out there.
Yeah.
I preach people get apps, because weather radios are great, but who remember, how many of y'all have a weather radio checked that battery's on? I don't check mine, I'm sorry. You know, I hate it, but I don't check my batteries, and you know, so those are things that we just, we don't work on. We did the last system, because it will call home phone numbers, and you know, that system I talked about, it will do the same. We had 400 people, out of 45,000 citizens, we have 400 people who got alerted the last time.
And a lot, not a lot of people got home phones anyhow, correct? I mean-
That's correct. So it's just, it became, like I told you guys before, it became harder for people to sign up. We wasn't having people going on there to sign up. We campaigned, 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 and it's still, hey, we have weather notification, what happened to our sirens? Well, we went on every news network we could. I mean, we've done everything we could to say that we're trying to transition away from weather sirens, and it just has not been effective. So I feel like we need to-
Go in a different direction.
Different direction, I mean.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the work you've done on trying to get those storm shelters open to the community. Okay, Gerald, are you going to represent the sheriff's department tonight? So we have Gerald Memes. Gerald is the chief deputy of the Chilton County Sheriff's Department.
First, I'd like to ask, when we're going to change the rotation so we're not always last? Because for four, for over four years now, we've always been last, is considered.
We're working on that.
I have a reclassification for Stephanie Crumley to be hired as a full-time corrections officer, effective February 25th, 2019.
Do I have a motion?
So, ma'am.
Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right, now I want to discuss the agreement with the Board of Education on the three new SRO officers. We have two agreements here. One starts March, which I was wrong, it's going to be March 1st, starts Friday, and go through the end of the fiscal year. And the amount they're going to give us for the rest of the year is going to be around $71,000.
Okay, Gerald, if you will, for the public, those SROs, what all schools are we providing SROs for?
The Verbena Annex, Verbena High School, and Isabella.
And an SRO is a school resource officer, it's a specially trained officer that'll be in the school. The cities are providing those officers, and the schools that we have that are not in the city, the Board of Education and the County Commission in conjunction are going to provide those officers for the schools who are not in, within city limits. So do you need a resolution to-
Yeah, to do the one that starts March 1st.
So that would be to sign the agreement, or?
Sign the agreement, and what I'll do, I'll give it to Mickey tonight, after you guys sign, he will take it to the superintendent in the Board of Education to sign their portion, and then I'll bring it back to you guys.
I make a motion, we'll allow the chairman to sign that contract starting March 1st for the three SRO officers.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The second agreement's basically the same thing, but it's going to be for the fiscal year, starting October 2019. Their portion will be $123,000, a little over. We'd like to have a resolution for you guys to sign.
So, ma'am.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? And just for public consumption, we had asked that the board enter into a contract with us so that we didn't hire these officers and then be without funding, and they have obliged us with that, so we're all covered, and those SROs can feel comfortable with their employment through the next year at least. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
At last, I would like to have a resolution passed to allow MRM to pay our medical vendors, not just our medical bills from the hospitals and the specialists, but our vendors. This come out, this being where Southern Health Partners had the contract in the past, and they handled all the vendors, and then when we done the change-up this year, all these vendors are just popping out of everywhere, and it's kind of hard to keep up with sometimes. I would like to fund it, because I've got a good relationship with MRM, I'm working with one certain person there, and to go through her, she'll screen it, she'll send it to me, I screen it, send it back to them to be paid.
So we'll have one payee from the county that will cover all that much like we did with, when we had Southern Healthcare Partners.
That's it.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So, ma'am.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Whitney, before you came in, we talked about the term sheet with the city of Clayton, and our consensus is that we want to review that and probably move forward with your board's work session on the 11th. Do you see a problem with that? It's kind of already said, isn't it? Okay. Okay. We're just not comfortable right now, we haven't had enough time for Robert to review it and for us to review it, and to ensure that we're where we want to be. And it may be that we're okay with it the way it is, but we would be more comfortable if we had a little time. Okay? All right, so I don't think we have any, anyone else.
Gas and diesel.
What am I missing?
Gas and diesel. Gas and diesel.
Yeah, I ain't got there yet. I was talking about the department.
Oh.
I was about to flip the page, I'm sorry, I was lost. What am I missing?
You were talking about the terms.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
That sheet went right onto you.
Okay, so we're on to commission reports, and I apologize to that, guys, I kind of lost my place tonight. So, the, we were asked last commission meeting by the Association of County Commissioners to endorse the resolution, or to pass a resolution endorsing the governor's gas tax. And we said, hey, we're not going to do that, because we don't know what the governor's going to ask for. So we did not leave, we did not leave an open-ended endorsement. So we have been approached and asked to pass a resolution of approval of up to 12 cents on the gas and diesel tax that the governor is planning to ask for tomorrow. So would anyone like to offer that as a resolution?
I'll offer it as a resolution with a cap of 12 cents.
And this would be just an endorsement of what the governor plans to roll out tomorrow in our press conference.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion?
Do you give a breakdown on the 12 cents?
Well, there isn't an official breakdown, but I think she's going to roll this out tomorrow. But what I've heard coming out of Montgomery is that it's going to be eight cents that will go to the state. There will be a portion of that eight cents that will be made available to cities and counties in the form of grant money. There will be three cents that will go to the individual counties, and one cent that will go to municipalities. So, just to put this in perspective, we're about 25 cents lower than most, than the average state. So this gets us in a place where we can get our infrastructure in a place to compete economically with all the industry that we're bringing into the state.
Mr. Chairman, also, that what I don't, what I checked on also with that was speaking with the ACCA, is that, which we know this, currently, the county does not collect any taxes off diesel. This bill will include diesel, that counties do not currently collect right now. So, it's the way I understand it, I will get a full, the cities or municipalities, no, the state is the only one that has collected the taxes off diesel. And someone that's in the diesel business, I find that pretty shocking, because our county has not collected it, but we'll see the details about that tomorrow, and that's one of the-
They collected it, we just didn't get any of it.
Right.
Yeah, they collected, we didn't get any of it.
It's collected, but the state highways, we get a proportion of, or a portion of the gas tax. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
Let the record show that Commissioner Headley opposes. Commissioner Memes, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Caton?
Tonight, I want to present the commission with an audit from the Waste Board, and I'd just like to tell you that the Waste Board, for those that don't know, the Waste Board, it is a board that the county put together several years ago, and the Waste Board owns the trash per station up at Forsbys, and we contract them, contract out the haul-in of the waste, and we've been able to get a little money off of that every year. And so whenever, when I went on the Waste Board several years ago, we owed $750,000 on the, when we built that trash per station. The initial amount was over $950,000. We have paid that debt off, and we now have close to $100,000 in our account. And we're looking at some different things that we're going to be doing in the next few years, because as you know, with the opportunity that we have now, with the opportunity of growth that we have now, we're going to have to do something, because the trash per station is not going to handle what we've got coming. There's going to be some more opportunities that we're going to continue to work for.
Okay. So this report will be housed in the commission office for anybody in the public that wants to view the financial audit, okay? in the public that wants to view the, uh, the financial audit, okay?
All right, the next thing I've got, and I'm gonna ask our attorney, uh, because I'm, I'm, I'm really hoarse and I wanna make sure everybody can hear and understand what we're saying, and so I'm gonna ask our attorney if he would read my resolution.
All right, this is a resolution of the Chilton County Commission supporting a bill related to expending funds from the trust account for maintenance and repair to the county jail, whereas the Chilton County Commission has proposed a bill relating to expending funds from the trust account for the maintenance and repair to the county jail, whereas the local legislative delegation has requested a resolution from the commission showing its support for the bill. Now therefore be it resolved by the Chilton County Commission as follows, the Chilton County Commission is seeking to have the legislature allow the Chilton County Commission to expend funds from the trust account created by act number ninety-six dash three sixty-one of the Alabama Legislature for the maintenance and repair to the county jail and witness whereof, the Chilton County Commission has caused this resolution to be executed in its name and on its behalf by its chairman on this twenty-sixth day of February two thousand nineteen.
Before I introduce this resolution, I'd like to just say a few things, back in ninety-six, this county, uh, was forced, we were forced to build a new jail and, uh, so we got a one cent sales tax passed and that, and that one cent sale tax is, uh, which called the sunshine and the calls, where at the end of that construction, the end of the bill being, the jail being paid off, then the tax collection stops, but we collected a tax for one year and that one year went in a trust account for repairs and maintenance, that's two point six million dollars. All right, we were to you, all we could use was the interest off that two point six million dollars for repairs and maintenance on the jail. At the time that we done it, at our time that commission did it, we were collecting about sixty thousand dollars a year in interest. Well, all of you know what interest does now, it's, it's down to nothing and we're, we are not being able to maintain the upkeep of our jail. We, uh, we get money for the county called capital improvement and when that capital improvement money is used for the upkeep of all of our buildings, well, all of our money for capital improvements have been going to the jail, uh, and, I mean, it's just a constant, it's just a constant pit because the jail is getting at the point where it has to have additional work, additional things, air conditioner's going out, um, you know, uh, the flooring is having to re-replace, the, uh, the, yeah, the plumbing, we've had to redo the whole ser, uh, the security system down there, the commission spent over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the security system, that came out of our capital improvement money. So, what we're asking is that we, we will take an, uh, initial, right up front, we will take four hundred thousand dollars out of this account and then we will do all the improvements to that jail, we'll fix everything that needs to be fixed in that jail and after that, then we will start getting a hundred thousand dollars a year to go to the repairs and maintenance of the jail, but now, it can only, and let me say that click real clear, only be spent for repairs and maintenance, it can't be spent on deputies, it can't be spent on cars, it can't be spent on salaries, only repairs and maintenance. So, if we spend seventy-five thousand dollars and there's twenty-five thousand dollars left over, it rolls over into the next year and it continues to roll over and-